General, the regular board meeting. President, trustees, village of Burnham, Hope County, all in the works today, July 11th, 2023. At this time, I would ask for a another trustee here, say.
Yes.
Trustee Cap?
Here.
Trustee Hodges?
Here.
Our trustee Garcia, here. Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Richardson, here. And trustee Claybrook?
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. For both of us standing for the President of the League, could you lead us, trustee Claybrook?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the government for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Beginning approval of corrections of the minutes of the board meeting that we held on July 11th, 2023. Any corrections, seven minutes?
I only have a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, no corrections, but trustee Cap is making a motion to approve the minutes for July 11th. Do we have a second?
I second.
A second by trustee Gray.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, yes. Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion to pass a minute of approval for July 11th, 2023. We will open the meeting to the public. You will state your name and your reason for addressing the board. Please, in the time, it's three minutes, please, if you have anything to say. So at this time, I will ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
I make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
A motion by trustee Claybrook, do we have a second?
I second.
A second by trustee Hodges. We have a quick call.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, yes. Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
I thank you. Motion to pass the open session. It's now, and if anyone has other things to say? Okay. No comment? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
I make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
It has a motion to approve by trustee Richardson to close the meeting to the public. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
A second by trustee Hodges. Would you take a moment?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, yes. Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, motion passed, meeting done, closing to the public. I wanted to say that we received news today that trustee approved a widow in hospital, so we just pray for her and the family. People lift it up.
Thank you, here. Thank you, maybe, thank you, here.
I was saying, you said one hour, trustees from some years ago, here's a widow in hospital, and it was important today, so she's not doing well in the hospital, so. But also, I mean, working on, trying to get some additional sidewalks done this year, and the Black Summer contract has been pretty busy, and they haven't, they haven't gotten back to us yet, so. Diane, you already covered, so get your last.
Okay. I have, so. Oh, and the Secretary of State was here on a couple weeks ago, month ago, I think, 29th of June. We had forty-nine people that were serviced. Everything cut out, so nineteen speakers, I mean, twenty-one driver licenses, twenty-one IDs, and two CDLs, and just almost fifty people that was right here in the village of Burnham, so we offered that service, and, and there was a program that I found out about when I was trustee. Started back in 2002, somewhere there about, so it's been going on, I mean, twenty-plus years. And we usually try to bring them out twice a year, so it's a convenience for the residents of Burnham. Okay, the clerk is not here this evening. Let's go collect the report. Public education can help save him well for our trustee Gray.
Good evening, community, families.
Good evening.
Discussion of consideration of taking action to approve on a Constantino GDO becoming a full-time governor of Burnham Police Officer.
Okay, any discussion from the board?
Do we know him? Has he been here?
Was he?
Yeah, he's the owner. But he's a part-time officer, or? Yes.
I'll explain that one to you. Your question. Yeah, so.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to take an action to approve on Constantino GDO becoming a full-time village of Burnham Police Officer.
Are there any questions from the board? This will be rest of active, like, to people who could have to go out, have to get their back paid, but. No, anyway. Are there any questions from the board?
Uh, yeah. How long have you been, uh? How long has you been with Burnham?
Um, I don't know exactly, but probably, probably, yeah.
Did we call him something else? Is that Dino?
Dino.
Okay, he should have told us that.
He didn't want to go up for training.
Well, you should have put it in notes, his nickname, then we would know what it is. Yeah, right?
He was a big guy, I told him.
He's that leave alone, huh?
All right. Motion.
Oh, I second.
He's a big guy.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, yes. Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
And we have been kind of short of police officers, so we just have to make sure we keep up the status. We have two officers injured right now, and it looks like one of them hopefully be coming back, and the other one is out, but, and we have police officer that is injured on the job and cannot return back to work, then we have to take down the rest of the line.
Sorry, we need a
We're a full-time officer.
Sorry, we need a my parents go out of school.
I perceive this.
Do you or someone you know need your high school equivalency, or your GED, South Suburban College, all free classes? For more information, you can call 708-596-2000. Free EEXL classes available at South Suburban College. In case you don't know what EEXL stands for, it stands for English Second Language. And the students will learn how to improve their English with emphasis on writing, verbal, and digital communication. Our CPR classes have been canceled. It's supposed to be this Saturday, but the classes have been canceled until August the ninth. That's on a Wednesday at 6:00 PM at our firehouse. Classes have been canceled until August the ninth, Wednesday at 6:00 PM at the firehouse. Access to Care is a charity care. It's not a health insurance, but it fills to get for uninsured benefits through Access to Care. So again, it's, it's, it's not a health insurance, but it helps those who do not have health insurance. You can get benefits through this company. It's called Access to Care, and they're located on Roosevelt Road. And they do doctor visits, cost five dollars, with prescriptions, and it varies. And then you can get lab tests and X-rays for five dollars. So for more information, you can call Access to Care. Again, they're located on Roosevelt Road, you can just call them. They will give you more information and help you execute with anything that you know. School supplies distribution. It's gonna be two days, August the first, I'm sorry, August the fourth, from four to seven PM, and August the fifth, that's on a Saturday, from ten to two. You must be a Burnham resident to receive supplies. And we have other things going on. The COVID clinic is gonna be there. We're gonna have someone doing blood pressure. So again, that will be August the fourth, four to seven PM, and August the fifth, ten to two. National Night Out, August the first, from five to eight PM. It's a community building event that promotes community partnerships. So again, National Night Out, it's August the first, start from five to eight PM. Community Day, just a reminder, it's August the nineteenth, from twelve PM to five PM. Vendors are needed. Because our weather is so changeable, all over the world, we have floods, we have rains, we have fires, so I have some questions and answers concerning tornadoes. We just never know what's gonna happen. We can never say never, because we do not know what's gonna happen from day to day. The question, what are three signs of a tornado coming? The color of the sky may change to a dark greenish color, and I've seen that happen before. You may hear a large roar sound, similar to a freight train. I know you've heard many people say that. And then, just before the tornado hits, a very quiet sound. So those are three of the signs.
What was the sentence that happened?
A large roar, like a freight train, I'm sure you've heard people say that. Question, what does a tornado warning mean? A tornado, a tornado warning means a tornado has been spotted, or there's a strong indication on radar that a tornado is in progress. So if you hear tornado warning, it's best to take cover. Question, how long does a tornado last? A tornado can last from seven seconds to one hour. What happens if a tornado picks you up? And if you heard on the news, I think it was last week, there was a tornado. There were two children who got taken, who got taken up with the tornado. A little girl and a little boy. I think they found one of the children, but they haven't found the other yet. So if you're picked up by a tornado, the chances of survival are sadly small. Because not only do you have all that, when you got all kind of other germs that's going around. So. What is the best place to go during a tornado? Although there's no completely safe place during a tornado. Some locations are safer than others. So you go to the basement, or you go to an inside room where there's no windows. If possible, avoid any room that has windows. Why is the bathroom the safest place to go in a tornado? It's because of the plumbing. The plumbing within the walls. It helps to add some structure, strength to the room. So you often hear people say, tornado, go to the bathroom, and that is why. What kills in a, what kills in a tornado? What kills people in a tornado? It's the flying germs that they're picking up. When do tornadoes mostly occur? They mostly occur in the April, May, and June. Again, this weather is so unpredictable, we never know. So just always be wise, to always be on our toes. Pay attention to our warning signs. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gray. And we all get a lot of this.
Okay.
Hopefully, we will have the use of it.
Absolutely.
I know, that's right.
Public Works, trustee Gray.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Public Works has been out cleaning and maintaining the open lots, keeping our village clean. Also, the bucket truck is in a shop, it needs a cylinder at this time, should be out soon. Also, tree trimming will be starting throughout the village pretty soon also. And I've been getting a lot of, well, everybody has up here, been getting a lot of complaints about skunks and wildlife.
Good, what did you say about the tree trimming?
It, it's, it will be starting soon throughout the village.
It may not be able to get every tree, like, when we start the sidewalk, it may not be able to get everyone, but like you said in the newsletter, it will come back for the next year.
Also, we've been getting a lot of complaints about noose and wildlife, skunks, raccoons, and possums, and stuff like that. And here's a few products that's pretty good. It's called, one is called Skunk Scram. It's all natural, it's good for gardens, your grass, good for gardens, your grass. It's not harmful to pets and stuff like that. That's basically for skunks. This is another one called Critter Ritter. And it's labeled for raccoons, skunks, squirrels, opossums, and things like that. And this one is about forty bucks, but it lasts a long time. And I mean, it doesn't kill the animal, but it detours them from your property. And also, this one does the same thing. Oh, you get that, Lowe's Home Depot, Menards. Both of these. These are gonna be the two best.
See the legs?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Take a picture with your phone.
Yes.
And you just put it around your yard?
Yeah, they're granules, you just sprinkle it around garbage cans, garden grass, and things like that. And I got, oh, it's a letter from Homewood Disposal. It's dated July 7th, 2023. It says, Dear Mayor, please accept this letter as official notice of Homewood Disposal Service Inc. not agreeing to allow the contract to automatically renew pursuant to Section Three of the Amendment entered January 14th, 2014. The agreement allows an automatic renewal for like terms unless written notice is submitted by either the village or the contractor with a hundred and eighty days' notice, which is August 28th, 2023, prior to the expiration date of January 31st, 2024. Over the past two years, the solid waste collection industry has seen unprecedented increases in inflation. These increases have directly impacted all truck equipment and final disposal costs at area landfills. These increased costs, in addition to a new Teamster labor agreement this fall, requires Homewood Disposal and the Village of Burnham to review the residential collection agreement. The intention is to negotiate a fair and equitable agreement, which will continue the quality collections the village is currently receiving. The goal is to negotiate a cost to collect that is lower than neighboring communities, which have recently bid their collection agreements. Homewood Disposal is proud of the service we have provided for the Village of Burnham, and are confident we will negotiate a renewal that is equitable for, for both the village and Homewood Disposal. Signed respectfully, Frank Hill.
So again, thank you, trustee. So we've been with Homewood, I think, ever since 2014, and so also the pandemic and all this other stuff, and more people are producing a lot of extra garbage, and the fact that they have to negotiate their union contract, as he said, so. And so the bottom line is that the garbage bill is gonna be increasing a little bit, so. So when the people see it, so it's not the water bill that went up. It's not the water bill, it's gonna be the rent bill, so. And we'll be going up a little bit. Right now, it's on the average of five dollars a week. And if you really look at the amount of garbage that, that is out there, I mean, I would pick it up for twenty dollars.
Right.
Good, so. That is not unreasonable, certainly, of trying to keep it as reasonable as possible. Do you have a message?
Let me know if you want help with the negotiation, because I have some contacts with the public, and they would really like to be on our our gardeners' collection. So we might get a good deal from them. And they, they settled the Teamsters' strike today, and they raised the hourly rate seven dollars and fifty cents, by the way. That was on the news today.
Uh, one more thing. A skunk got in my backyard, and my dog killed it.
Thank God. Did he sprain? Thank God.
No, it was adolescent, so it was like, it was a baby, so it did.
Shame on you.
I didn't go help. The house behind me, I try to keep the bushes and stuff clear, because when I'm out there, I have seen, I, you know what? I'm gonna tell y'all just like this. I go in the yard behind me, I'm telling you, because I be out there cutting grass, and I goes in there, and I cut the bushes, but I can see, because I don't know, nobody near me. I'm serious, I do go in that yard, and I cut down everything so I can see people. And I seen two of them myself. They was coming this way towards me, and before I knew it, they had got in this yard, and I didn't see it, I said, okay, I know what to do. So I did what I had to do. Got my, my yard worked.
Well, we are certainly a moment, and we're trying to make sure that people cut down the oak grove and tall trees and bushes, and some of them blowing up in the utility wires and the commode wires, and so one, he fell on somebody else's property that did some damage, and I don't know what that's gonna do, but it's gonna be a problem.
You know that wire is still there, one hundred and thirty-eighth on the sidewalk? It's like in a really dangerous
Was it in the alley?
No, it's on, it's on the sidewalk. You know that house where they
And so it's to what, the railroad track from your house?
No, it's in front of Big Jack's house.
Oh.
Right, so someone, they took the wire, and they curled it around, they tied it around the fence. But it's just there, so like if a kid is riding their bike, and they don't see it, you know, you know, it's like right at their neck level, and you know, that, that wire needs to be either cut or something or other, but it is dangerous, the way it's sitting there.
Okay, yeah, we'll follow, you did mention that before.
We could have it, Public Works cut it, or I could cut it, or Travis could go cut it, yeah.
I don't think it's a white wire.
It's just a cable wire.
It's a cable wire, yes.
You just pull it down, jerk it off.
Okay. I thank you.
Chapter three. What qualifies your tree from being on the list for your trees to be trimmed?
Um, hanging over wires and stuff, stuff like that, or
Be good.
Hanging over wires, stuff like that, or on the parkway, on the parkway, hanging in the streets, or on the sidewalks, things like that.
Um, I just, I think that Homewood is doing a wonderful job, and I'm very satisfied with them. I think they do an excellent job. And number three, my, when my granddaughter came over here, and she said, she was, look at this, look at the kitty cat outside the window, and I looked, it was a big skunk, and it was something that was wild, right there.
Well, you're lucky that your daughter didn't get sprayed, my daughter got sprayed, and it is horrendous, horrendous, it takes months to get rid of that smell.
Wow.
Nothing works. I don't, I don't care what they tell you, nothing works.
Just have to let it run its course.
And everything smells like, you know, everything, everything you wear, I don't care if it's in the basement, if it's up, yeah.
Maybe it isn't working?
No, nothing works.
What about that tooth stuff?
Organ Revolution fan, trustee Cap here. No, not now. One people.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Discussion of consideration of taking action to approve or not approve ordinance number 2023-0-004, and ordinance making appropriations for all corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2023, and ending April 30th, 2024, for the village of Burnham.
So there are questions from the board, did we see that? If the trustee Garcia is making a motion to approve this point, I'll
I'll second it.
A second by trustee Cap?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, yes. Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed. See, trustee Garcia.
Discussion of consideration of taking action to approve or not approve on ordinance number 2023-0-005, and ordinance establishing the salaries of elected officials, appointed officials, local liquor control commissioner, members of the police department, and members of the fire department, and other employees of the Village of Burnham.
Any questions? See, trustee.
Um, so make a make a motion to approve number 2023-0-005, and ordinance establishing the salaries of elected officials, appointed officials, local liquor control commissioner, members of the police department, members of the fire department, and other employees of the Village of Burnham.
So there's a motion to approve, but trustee Garcia, you made a motion to approve the salary on the total pay, so we have a second, please?
Second.
A second by trustee Claybrook, we have a call.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, yes. Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Cap, do you have anything else to say?
No.
Thank you, trustee Garcia, I did a report, and and that, trustee Cap?
Good evening, everyone, and I have nothing to define it.
Thank you, trustee.
Yeah.
Okay, trustee Garcia.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have nothing also, but I just wanna say for all of you residents to please try to stay in where it's cool and stay hydrated, because we're gonna have some hot days for the next few days, yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, trustee Gray, congratulations. Trustee Hodges?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, real quick, I want you guys to know I'm planning the upcoming basketball tournament and soccer tournament. If you're gonna be part of the committee, or you have any suggestions, please let me know. I have more information about those coming up soon. Also, I want to remind you, yes, we did basketball, who backed at Burnham Park again, so you can go play basketball over there, you can. Also, they're doing some upcoming flag football over at Memorial Park, flag football camp. They're gonna be doing that from August 5th to August 12th, at ten o'clock, twelve o'clock. Seven five dollars per person, it's gonna be over there at Memorial Park, which is over there where I have the open gyms at. And I'm currently working with them to come up with another idea of plan for Burnham. Again, I'm gonna do it with that open house, what's it called over there? Also, I want to talk about, I have one more thing, if I have to cover. Over at Park on 100th, the Kitty Park on 139th, near Hotty. We, since we had the storm, some of the trees came down over there, so I went over there, and cleared all the trees on the other side of the fence so the kids can play, but the director of the, it's Cabine Memorial Park, and she's working to get those branches removed over there. But they should be out the way of the kids playing over there, over there, you know, at the park, so we're working hard over there to get that done. And again, I talked to the people that come in Memorial Park District, they're working, still working hard to see if we can get some, replace those swings over there. So we're working hard on that. And, and I wanna congratulate trustee Greer on a great garage sale. That was a really great day, I look forward to that thing, because a lot of people got there, we had lots of fun, and I definitely emptied out my pockets, because there was so much good, good stuff, so I want to be congratulated on that. Great job, trustee Greer. And Yeah, oh, yeah, all the trustees, everybody participated in this, really hard, because I was so tired. The team was like, walking around, I'm like, wow. So I want to thank you for that, it was a great day. And that's what I have, that's pretty much what I have left today. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you, thank you, trustee Gray. The deputy communications, the responsible, I'm sorry. I would ask for a moment for Silas, who belongs one hour veteran, Dave Swuski, and Mr. Reese. Okay, thank you. We will have in our finished building, in new business, I would like for the attorneys standing for court to stand up. This is gonna be in a two-part series, and second part is not complete tonight, so it'll be completed in the next couple of days or so, but, you know, I mean, but the village officials and the people would like to congratulate you and your But the, um, I mean, but the village officials and the people would like to congratulate you on your, like, fifty-year wedding anniversary. And again, so, I mean, if this.
I wish I would have known, I'd have my better half here.
I'm sorry, I didn't really, I didn't really think about it like that, so.
Congratulations.
Take another part, we'll get to see you down there. Thank you very much. If you'd like to say something, you can.
She's not here, I could probably say a lot of things, but. But she's recording it, she'll see it later, then I'm really. Thank you.
Congratulations.
She'll speak to the mayor and everything. I've, I've shared some things with this village ever since I became and before I became a lawyer. Last year, I celebrated my fiftieth anniversary of a licensed attorney in the village and the state. And uh, almost simultaneously, the next day, I started working as one of the prosecutors here. And I celebrated fifty years here as a village prosecutor and village attorney. And then I got an award from the Illinois Municipal Lawyers Association that I belong to. It's uh only one of two lawyers that have continuously represented one client for over fifty years. And it was a, a great distinction. And uh, now, uh, July seventh, I celebrated our, our wedding anniversary, fifty years with uh a wonderful lady that I fell in love with, had four children with. And uh, it just grows deeper every day. So uh, you know, uh, we made sacrifices and, you know, people talk about investments and stock mergers like that. But we invested in four children. So uh, they all, I think, turned out pretty good.
Guys, it's awesome.
I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud to work for this community. It's a wonderful community, uh changed over the years. But it's always, as the mayor has adopted, moving forward, it's progressive and it's going forward. And as long as you're willing to keep here, I'm willing to stay here and go forward with all of you. Thank you.
And we do have, um, tonight actually is supposed to be our last meeting of the summer recess, unfortunately. You don't have to call the board back, but we do have a couple things that's gonna be kept in there, so. We'll have to start getting those done in August, so um, so we got blank magic. So um, so we'll be, um, it's not gonna be the next month, it'll be after that, but it will be sometime in August, I'm pretty sure of it.
Will you let us know? We'll get the email and send it to you.
We just like that, okay? And we'll probably send you an extra text message or something. So just watch your email. Okay, so if we don't have anything, it's not a good business. I'll add some more into your. Make a motion to. One for the trustee, so we have a question for the judge.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hatches?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, yes. Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
I'd like to pay that be the judge, thank you. Did you have another question?
Just wanted to ask, who owned that house directly behind, because that's where the son was. Uh, directly behind me, I think it was a bacon house.
I think that's what the man's house is.
But I, I know that maybe he was back there and she said they back now, but I haven't seen her. That's the yard I be going and cutting the bushes and stuff out. So that's why I seen the skunks coming around.
That house gonna be the one, of course.
Yes, it is, yes, it is. And uh, something else I wanna say, it's the yard next to them and they got.